I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one with liberty and justice for all.
Couldn't think of our logo. I like the one with the.
The meeting was certification.
Meeting was posted at the courthouse, the administration building and on the website.
Rick has taken role with the tablets. Day is online. Adam, would you like permission to participate?
Good morning, everyone. No, Bob, if possible, I'm just on. I'm gonna have to leave again probably at some point during the meeting, so I'm just on while I can be here.
Okay. So, as I said, Adam is monitoring the meeting but will not be participating. And Ryan, Lucy, we have not heard. Well, technically, in present, that's. Or one excuse, what happened? Approval of the agenda, we would like to move the presentation, item 12. From Grand Regional Health here up. Under the administrators' comments under communications. Moments. Oh, moved. Motion by Pat Schrader, seconded by Joe Ma. To. Arrange the agenda as described. I'm in favor of that motion. You say aye. Anyone opposed? I, motion carries. Item six is the approval of the minutes of the March 18th, 2025. Any comments? Question? Motion to approve, motion by Rick Sanson, seconded by Kathy Tapp to approve as printed. Any further comments? Very non-hall in favor of the motion to approve as printed, say aye. Anyone opposed? Same. The motion also carries. Under communications, April is National County Government Month. Thank you to board members, elected officials, staff, and everyone that helps great counties provide the services to the public. I would also like to thank the American Legion, Michael Owens for his assistance. We had the government day last Wednesday. Fifty-eight to fifty-five students that were here. Presentation in this room by the constitutional officers, administrator, and BSO office. The used to get a chance to vote in my election. And then the other side, the other half of the group wanted to see us be for a jail tour and again constitutional officers making some comments. We're gonna talk about it later in the agenda, but we all look forward to the appreciation launches that will start on Thursday. And we have most of the arrangements made, but we'll talk about that when we get there. I'm currently working with Judy Henson and pre-county AT, UTV rights. First issue of the ordinance change that we made on highway routes. The DFT has some concerns about language on a couple of those, so we're making slight communications. When the PLT approves it, we will bring that back. It's a few things about the bridge law that you need to get off high state highway as soon as possible. So those are the issues that we're dealing with. And Angie from HR has asked me to remind everyone about driver's license and insurance, my return version policy. I think she's got plenty of her already. But if you have anything else. You can get ahold of Angie. She has the words. And I would like to thank Kathy for providing late history on this. Then I'll turn it over to her name for his comments.
Just a few moments. So obviously, I'm still in recovery mode from a couple of weeks ago. Many of you've heard that. So kind of been working four or six hour days roughly. Anyway, so I've been working on a new agreement between Grant County and Iowa County. We met yesterday afternoon with Larry Burke, the county minister of Iowa County, and Andy Phillips to, again, create a draft that we will in turn be sharing with county board chairman, Katie, their county board chair, and Holly to look at. Do initially give their comments and feedbacks on it, and then obviously go from there to the various committees to look at as well. So been working on that quite a bit some things in place. That's kind of been the biggest project prior to my medical thing. I'd been working on the two handbook, the employee handbook and the administrative manual to get that all updated and consistent formatting and so forth. And those are pretty well, up to date. We got, we keep identifying more policies that we have to address as Angie and I talk about some different HR things. Oh, we're gonna need something on that. We need, so we're continuing to add to our list to, to make that grow a little bit more. So I think that's kind of the main things I've kind of been working on as of late, other than just working with department heads on different things. We're working on capital improvement project plan for department heads. One department head had it done already, and we got some ideas based on that, how to kind of help move it forward from there. So we shouldn't be seeing that in the next month or so. Everybody getting those done. Let's see, if you has any questions, I'll move into the next agenda item. And so I had Grant Regional reached out, Brandy Rikers, who's the foundation director, reached out about the county possibly providing a letter of support for their upcoming expansion plans in 2026. So she is here along with Joel Gerling, Bailey, who is their chief financial officer. So I would invite them to come forward and make their present.
Yeah, there's a link right there.
Right above you, so you should be good there.
All right. So as Nate mentioned, my name is Brandy Rikers, a foundation director at Grant Regional. This is Joe Galing, and he is our CFO. And we are excited to be here. Thank you for allowing us to come. We wanted to share more about our exciting expansion project that we have upcoming and hoping to have supports through support letters for grant writing, things like that. I do the fundraising for the hospital and then some of our fundraising initiatives as well. So now I make sure this is. Thank you, Shane. Um, so I mentioned our expansion project. It does include behavioral health, nutrition services, rehab, including the gym, as well as nutrition, or I said nutrition service, the laboratory. So again, talking about behavioral health, which includes outpatient counseling, rehab again includes the gym as well. The laboratory will be moving and then kitchen and nutrition services. Our kitchen is original to 1955, so our hospital is celebrating a 70th anniversary this year. So that means that that kitchen was there since the very beginning. So there's several things that need to be changed with that. And we're excited to enhance our patient experience as well as improving our facilities to meet the needs of our region.
And I'm a late pinch hitter, so I'm gonna apologize. I'm gonna do a lot of reading off the slides because these will keep me effective and obvious. Um, but Brandy, you can hold me. Up on the screen are two conceptual drawings. We do not have blueprints done yet. We're just, we've kind of gone through a dream page with our department managers to kind of think about what we wanted to do. The two hash areas on the Madison Street side of the building is where we're looking at doing our expansion. We're looking at an expansion of about 12,000 square feet with another almost 17,000 square feet of renovation or inside of the hospital to address growth in areas that were growing and really like Brandy talked about, the 70-year-old building structure. That's the, that's the biggest key that is pushing this is both of those opportunities. So the benefits of it, you know, is up on the screen, or it's expanded, upgraded facilities, improved infrastructure, increased accessibility and efficiency, expanded space to allow improved patient flow and care areas. And then a fifth one really is, this sets us up, because as being landlack as we are, this sets us up going forward and to have future growth inside of our four walls to some areas of future growth as outpatient services continue to grow. We're working with Connor Slater as our architect on this project, and we'll be, right now, we're reviewing an RFP that'll be going out to hire a construction manager to help this design process. So the first area that we're looking at is behavioral health. That's been a really a growth area for us since 2021 when we started. We do five-day-a-week counseling now with three providers. We served almost over 1,300 patients last year with those three providers, and that continues to grow. This year, we're looking at adding a behavioral health APP. So it would be like a nurse practitioner that could also prescribe medications because our counselors aren't physicians, aren't nurse practitioners. They can't prescribe it. This would allow expansion of that services. Take some of that behavioral health load off of our family medicine providers, both physicians and nurse practitioners and PAs, and just kind of expand that service. Right now, they're located in our family medicine clinic. This will get them into their own setting, you know, more private for the patients, better patient experience, ability to do some therapy, things like that in the future. So giving them more space and continued area of growth is, this is something that comes up every three years. We, we do our community health needs assessment as a key area of need in the community. So rehab, the last time we updated our rehab gym was in 2008. We served almost 14,000 patients in the various modalities, physical therapy, occupational therapy, cardiac rehab, and the other, other specialties of physical therapy. Currently, our cardiac rehab is separated from our space concerns. This will allow us, expanding the gym, to get everybody back together, everybody back in with their therapies, and we'll have duplicative equipment and things like that. It'll just provide, again, a better patient experience.
So you're saying the rehab won't be in a closet like it is now?
It'll be a bigger closet. Cardiac rehab is in a smaller room.
Yeah.
Good CT room from years ago, and so that will be back on the expanded gym.
Yeah.
So lab was a later addition to this project to go through, but again, similar to kitchen that we'll talk about, lab has some infrastructure concerns about the ceiling that to really get into it would could create a lot of downtime. This is an opportunity to relocate lab, give us time in the future to take care of those needs, and lab is currently located next to our outpatient department. This will give us great space to grow into in the future as we continue to grow outpatient services. So this is, it's kind of a win-win is planning for now as well as planning for the future. And Brandy mentioned, these pictures I'd like are from 1955, but if you were in our kitchen, they look exactly the same today. So we haven't touched our kitchen in 70 years. We, we provide meals to ADRC as well as to, we had in the past, to Head Start, but close to 9,000 meals in the community annually, as well as to patients, visitors, and staff. We don't really have a very big dining area for, for visitors or for our staff. At this point, this would give us an expanded dining area, much, much nicer area for community building and a much more efficient kitchen going forward. So we're really excited about getting that in as part of this project as well.
So looking at the timeline, when is this happening? When are we going to start? In that regard. So this year, project planning, as Joel talked about, still working through those details with the architects and the building and the outfitting of the project, but also the fundraising. So we've started working on that. There are grant opportunities that I'm exploring as well as you know, working with community members in our service area and those with an affinity for what we're doing. And, and those folks, you know, donors have affinities to different areas of what we're expanding, and it's really interesting and, and good to have those conversations with those that want to support the project. And so that's one of the things that we're working on here this next year. Twenty-six, looking at groundbreaking in the spring and fundraising will continue into next year as well. So some of the construction and the renovation portion of the project too, with a projected completion of 2027 as well. So.
We'd really like to get the plans finalized by fall of this year and then put it, get it out for good, get things lined up so that as soon as we can break ground in the area where the gazebo is on the Madison Street side, we can get it rolling in the spring. This is gonna be a very phased project since we're touching existing space to try to do this as efficiently and cost effectively as possible.
So again, building a healthier community together, it takes everyone to support. And talking about our 70 years back, 70 years ago, when the hospital started, it took a lot of community support and community members who started Grant Regional. And we're proud of that. And it's really going to take a lot of stakeholders, businesses, everyone in our area to help move that forward and support as well. So again, as I mentioned, individual supporters, we're looking at businesses. There's pledge opportunities for individuals and others as well. And grant writing, I'll be doing continuously for this project. Anything that I can find will be pursuing as well. And so moving forward, we do have a recent donor who graciously donated 70,000 to this project, and we're moving forward with other initiatives to like our golf outing that's coming up in June that will be supporting our expansion project too. And I'm really excited. Heard about it, and if you'd like to participate, definitely talk to me as well. Does anyone have questions for us right now?
I have one. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Did you mention something or did I miss it on childcare possibilities of this at all?
Not at this time with this project.
Something you plan on for the future, possibly?
It is not something we've talked about internally at this point.
Pat.
My question is, is are we in direct competition with you? I think you guys are addressing the mental health issue. And, you know, you look at our Unified, we spent a lot of money. I have a bank, I'd love to sell you so you guys could expand there, you know, and have your society there. But I personally feel we're in direct competition with you with Unified and with the hospital, because I think that's what your guys' main goal is. We all realize mental health is an issue, and you're going towards that. But this way here, it looks like we're in direct competition with you know, I know we can support someone if you're gonna compete against each other, but, you know, I'm just asking a question because that arises to me. That's the first thing I see when you talk about mental health, you know?
You know, as I mentioned, it pops up in the New York Community Health Needs Assessment. The last two, two times we've done it, it pops up as the area of our state. So I think unfortunately, there's plenty of need out there for all of us. So we see it as a competition is more as a cooperative or complementary, maybe a better way to say it.
We shouldn't be competing against other operations is what I'm trying to get a point across. Public sector.
Yeah. And I think to Joel's point too, I think there's, we, we're working with others with our community health needs assessment, other area hospitals as well. And there's, there's so much need that sometimes there's waiting lists or some that don't take, say juveniles, you know, they don't take younger children. So we want to make sure that we're serving that need as well. I appreciate the question.
Thank you.
Is it confidential or doesn't, who gave the 70,000?
No, it is not confidential, but that would be Nancy Hoffman. And remember about Hoffman.
Very good.
So Bob, when you set up your estate, you want to remember the Grant Regional Hospital for us?
Well, I'm gonna be in another institution. I'm on your list.
My lawyer, one of them might be here. He'll vouch for that.
All right, sounds good.
Who's handling my estate. He's one of the heirs I found out.
Is there any other questions for Brandy and Joel?
If you do, please don't hesitate to reach out and answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So as you see by the agenda, it is discussion of possible action. We're looking for the board's support to write letter for the Great Regional Health. They are looking at, like Brandy described, any other opportunities? We have written letters of support in the past. So Nate and I decided that this would be the appropriate and discussion item. And I think the motion, if there is one, it needs to contain who you want to write the letter. Kathy?
I'll make a motion for Grant County to issue a letter of support for Grant Regional.
And who would write it? Who do you want to sign it?
Who do I want?
Administrator or county board chair? It's your boat, boy.
Both of you.
I second.
I had a question too. I like that spot. Get Holly's input if I could.
Yeah, I was.
I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take Rick's second and then allow John to ask Holly first.
And Holly, this would more pertain to, to Pat's question on competition aspects of it. Would you care to comment on that?
Yeah, but we rely heavily on our private sector to support Unified community services focused on individuals that are uninsured or not insured. And the need of our community far surpasses our capacity to provide all services. And so we rely heavily on our community partners to fill in those gaps of people that have private insurance or capacity to self-pay, but they're getting that through the private sector. And that as a county mental health agency, we focus on the severe and persistent mentally ill, individuals who need treatment, individuals who don't have insurance, and individuals that need AODA treatment.
Really, I can follow up because another thing that's been brought up from Orchard Manor standpoint, you know, we're living in direct competition as well with Grant Regional for swing beds. You know, they're doing some different things at Grant Regional. That's kind of shifted some things away from Orchard Manor. Just in the interest of transparency, we had the conversation with Grant Regional. Alicia's talked to him quite a bit. So just, just an FYI, it doesn't really affect a lot of Orchard Manor's operations, but it is there.
Any further questions or comments? Kathy?
Add, based on my motion, that I think the competition is good. And what's especially good is that it offers the citizens of Grant County options, which, you know, some may be able to take part in, some maybe not at all, but it provides a well-rounded service.
I'd just like to reiterate what Holly was, or ask again what Holly was saying. So you're saying that the need is surpassing the, the ability.
We target the highest Q AODA uninsured.
That's what I thought.
We don't have wait lists. We can get people in. When you go out to private sector and you're looking at non-severe persistent mental illness, general anxiety, depression, private insurance, capacity to self-pay, you're looking at a six-week to six-month wait. Orion Mental Health currently is six-month wait even, even for our contracts.
So competition isn't really a concern of yours.
The market, yeah. I mean, just the need for the services is very high.
Is to me.
But respect Pat's comments in, in making sure that the partnerships are healthy and to Nate's point, perhaps if private sector can serve, what else would that free Unified up to do better or expand within our mandated programs? And I see this as a partnership and a, a need in the community that would reduce wait times. On average, individuals wait about 10 years from the onset of symptoms to seeking treatment for, let's just say, general depression and anxiety. A 911 dispatcher in Iowa County, I recently went to a presentation where he very openly shared his story about his delayed onset and getting help and ultimately an attempt of suicide. And, you know, having providers available to Kathy's point, that aren't the county mental health system, but more subtly rolled into like a PCP, breaking down that stigma that, that mental health is health and wellness. And sometimes it's easier for people to talk to their medical doctor or their medical doctor to notice these symptoms, screen them early and refer them right in the clinic that they're used to going into. It's tough to walk into a clinic that everyone in the community knows is mental health to be parked out front. I mean, there is a barrier and a stigma to some of that. And, and I just see this as an expansion and a capacity for people who kind of are just early on in symptoms or have been suffering for 10 years to have just smoother transition of continuum of care that is in collaboration with their medical doctor and maybe other medical issues that they have going on for continuity of care to address the whole person. And just to reiterate again, we rely heavily on our private sector, and we screen out individuals that are lower level or capacity to be seen in the private sector so we can prioritize those individuals that can't go to a doctor. We have some individuals that, because of the severity of their symptoms, have been kicked out of all the private clinics in the community because they have barriers, they, they don't show for appointments. They're not allowed to go to private sector. Those are the people we need to be here to serve.
Any further climate questions? Motion before is, is to draft a letter of support for the Regional Health Center for their upcoming expansion to be signed by the county board chair and administrator. All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Same. Motion carries. Thanks again for the presentation. Move back up to item eight, appointments. We would like to go back to the original committee appointments for District 13 and appoint Roger Ray to take over Southwest Cap and the library. John?
There's no questions. I would motion for approval.
Motion by John Biden, seconded by Gary North. Any questions? I mean, Roger has talked to the people that have taken those positions back, and he's comfortable with the assignment, so.
Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna talk to Angie Noel about the timing. I didn't get a chance to the last time because I had to zoom into the meeting at the last minute and didn't get a chance to, to raise that concern. But I told Roger I would contact Angie.
And Zoom is an option.
Zoom is an option. Roger's a little bit concerned about Zoom. He does have a smartphone. I talked to him a little bit about it, and I think he can talk to Shane, perhaps, if he's got further concerns about how to zoom in.
But you're gonna try to help with the timing issue.
I'm gonna try to help with the time.
Roger seemed comfortable, so. Okay. Anything further? So the motion before us is to appoint Roger Ray to Southwest Cap to replace Roger Guthrie and to the library board replacing Rick Sanson. All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Are there any grants that we need to take action on? Holly?
We don't mean to talk about our vital strategies, Grant, that we're pursuing. I want to be talking about it at my board tomorrow, but I didn't think.
What is your deadline?
It's kind of open-ended at this point, but.
So we could take it up next month?
Perhaps. The application period. And you need to take it through the OIB task forces first.
I think it's more appropriate to wait. But thanks for mentioning. So we'll move to item 10, 613 zoning amendment. RZ 25-07 is a reason or request for Jamestown Township carpool ID 26-927 to change zoning classification from agricultural to, to light industrial to build a new town garage on the site. This is for plus or minus 5.35 acres located in the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter, section 21, township one north, range two west in Jamestown Township. Jamestown Township, on November 12th, 2024, with five voting in favor and zero opposed. And the Conservation Sanitation Zoning Committee.
And the conservation sanitation zoning committee met on April third, twenty twenty five for voting in favor and zero opposed. This reason will make the parcel conforming with the proposed land use for a new town garage. They did.
You have a question on this petition?
Petition on R Z twenty five dash zero nine is a reason on request for Grant County Real Estate Services, Inc. Parcel ID fifty dash one zero five six part. To change the zoning classification of farm and preservation agricultural to, to split off the house and some of the buildings from the crop ground. This is for plus or minus four point zero nine acres located in the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter. Of section thirty six township three north, range one west and Platteville Township. Platteville Township on March tenth, twenty twenty five with three voting in favor, one zero opposed. And Conservation Sanitation and Zoning Committee on April third, twenty twenty five is for voting in favor and zero opposed. And this reason will keep the existing house and buildings conforming with land use with the split from the crop ground.
Questions on this petition?
Not a motion for approval.
Motion by John Biden, one second by Joe Moon to approve the six hundred and thirteen zoning amendment, including. Here's R Z twenty five oh seven and R Z twenty five oh nine. All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And eleven is an update on the fiber optics and communication project.
Real briefly, the biggest thing going on in Cassville, as of yesterday afternoon, they had the bottom tower, bottom section of the tower stacked. I would guess either they completed the second section late afternoon or will be completing that today, which gets all of the towers up. This point, so Raycom's currently working on the radio portion of it and programming so forth in the hopes of starting those installs before too long. You know, Shane's got some movement on the fiber optic side that he's been working on. Turn it over to him.
At this point, we have some issues with our fiber optic connections to Lancaster. To the police department in Black Hill, to the police department to Black Hill to the Black Hill Tower. We have those issues sorted out and that's up and running. At Cassville, I have been in contact with the fire department there. We have access to our rack. The reason we are, are doing that is to set up a temporary add to the wall on the fiber loops so that we can. Get the loop up and running before all the shelters are complete and powered up. At Wes, we're still waiting for power to be set up and running for, before we can set up our N C S five forty. All the other tower sites are ready to roll. We have N C S five forties installed in them and they are communicating with, with the county. And then we're having a testing of the radios. And answer equipment on the twenty fourth of April. So currently Steve Braun and myself are invited to look at that. We're also going to function test an inverter. We have an issue with an inverter at Bosqueville a couple of weeks back where both inverters were offline and we lost the shelter. So my conversation with Raycom, we'd like to run a, basically a function test of the inverter system at the shelters. So they have a demonstration set for us in view. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for the updates. We'll move to item thirteen, a discussion possible action on the Grant County law.
So in your package, you should have received two, two different documents. One is a document that shows all the different logos that we currently have throughout the county. Which pulling them all together, yeah, it was, was quite a few different ways of doing things over the years. So thought behind this to create a branding for Grant County and create one logo then that other departments could then utilize that core logo. For their own department as well. So. Have an internship with a student from Southwest Tech in the graphic design program who created. The other one that, that was sent to you. And this was based on feedback from department heads and so forth. So now I'm presenting to you. To, for any comments or feedback that you might be able to provide. Me to turn back to her or if you all like it, then we motion to move forward and we adopt that as our new logo. So that's kind of where we're at.
With Rick. Like to say, having been in marketing for forty years, really is important to have consistency. For marketing sake, for the county and being new on the county board, basically actually not new anymore. I can't, can't say that anymore. But a lot of people don't know what the county does. So maybe this will be helpful to bringing it all into one.
I'm gonna go with Pat next.
I was just gonna make the motion to go with the one with the colored. I thought was probably the best of the two, but there's more discussion. I'm okay, but I'd make that a form of a motion.
So I have a motion by Pat, John.
I, I second the motion so we can go on, but.
Then I'm gonna take Gary.
You know, I think it's a good idea to generally to have the same logo for our. One I have. A little bit of concern with perhaps Orchard Manor wouldn't have this problem. But in the past, I always thought using my term, we're sending you to the county home. Is kind of a negative connotation. And by having Grant County and then, you know, saying Orchard Manor Nursing Home at the bottom of it. Is. Bringing about those negative aspects, you know, I mean, right now Orchard Manor, even though it's a county facility. Has more of a, kind of an independent image. And I'm just wondering if. You know, being really blatant about it being that the county facility would have any sort of negative P R aspect.
Yeah, I can understand that. In addition, Alicia is working with this student to recreate the, the, the tree logo that they have to, to, for them to incorporate within their. Usage as well. So there's gonna be some of that, even though we have this main core E D R three cannot use the county logo. They're required by the state to use a specific one. So maybe for some things they might be, but most is gonna have to stick with their current logo. Like you said, Orchard Manor is gonna probably create another one off of this to better do exactly what you say. So there will be some kind of, but, but we're trying to minimize that. We really want to stay kind of focused to a core logo and the departments be able to customize that for their individual department.
I was involved in the city's logo when they did a new logo a number of years ago and they did exactly that. They took the, the main one and then kind of branched out a little bit so that would solve some of your, the issues that you mentioned.
Carol.
Unified would have the same issues serving more than just Grant County.
Yeah, and this may not be applicable to them.
Kathy.
Just, just a comment. I like the, the logo. But I have a concern with, when it's in black and white. To me, my first thought was, I know that it's supposed to be fields, but when I see them black or white, it looks like major highways. So maybe the color could be. Darkened or something.
That's why I went with the colored one.
John.
Good at that logo too. I mean, just to me, it seems like there's a lot of dead space around it. And just to throw something out there as an idea, Nate, maybe. When we have the image of the size of Wisconsin, maybe behind it, was that tough to do? Just a thought, yeah.
Joe.
Goes with Kathy and it's net peggy, but Nate, you're the one that had to point out that those were rolling hills to me. The sky and half your fields are the same colors. And that's kind of what blended it together for me. I, I really liked the idea and I liked the color.
Roger.
I like the idea. So the, like contour strips or whatever you call them and. I was, I had to partake in a neighboring county where they ended up. Doing something similar to this, but then it flows into the trick. And that was not a good, not a good representation of what should happen.
What job did you have?
I'm not gonna say.
I'm gonna speak to a comment that I've heard from some departments. And I think Nate's already kind of hit it. Some of the departmentals. They appreciate their logo because they have it on uniforms or shirts or whatever. And I understand Rick's point that we want a brand. And we want to be independent. I went through that when I was. A dealership of. The number one skidster in the world for a while and everybody called him that. But so I understand what branding is and I. I don't know what action you're expecting today. But. I know that there are some departments that would like to be able to stay with theirs rather than spend the extra money to change everybody's attire.
Yeah, and I, I think the goal behind that would be done through attrition as they replace stuff. Bring the new on. I would never expect anyone to just a full blown change everything the minute we change this. And, and again, with the feedback you provided, I would suggest you not. Take the motion up and let me take this back to, to the, to Emma and provide this feedback to her because I, I see some of the concern. I can bring it back again.
I just want to speak to Gary's comment. I don't see any place on any logo that we use for Orchard Manor that says nursing.
Says what?
Nursing home.
Oh, no.
It's Orchard Manor. So I, that's by design because of your concern. So any additional feedback for Nate as he works through the branding opportunity?
I brought to all my.
I'll let you take it back.
I'd make the motion. We withdraw all that and send it back to Nate. Or to Nate to.
We'll just take no action today.
There you go.
Take back the motion and.
Thank you.
Take no action at this time.
Good point.
Thank you for that discussion. We'll, we'll item fifteen, county government month appreciation meals. Lay on your desk today was what we. Is somewhat the final. Agenda and I apologize that it's numbered backwards, but. Do have my idea. Feeling this morning. I only got to make one change in red is in five. So. The first one is at C S P on Thursday. We have turkey dressing. Potato salad, veggie tray and cheese tray ordered from Ma's Bakery. For around sixty people. Quick trip, we have already ordered pumpkin bars, brownie, fries, brownies and some small chunks of milk. I did contact. The cheese curds in Fenimore, they offer their curds in five pound bags, six twenty nine pound. They're fresh on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So. Tony and I had talked and because of the quick turnaround, we decided to go with the cheese tray at this one. If the feeling is to go with curds in the future, we can place our order and get those. Whether they go half or all curds in the future. But the clerk's office will be getting. Crackers, they already have enough plates and everything for tomorrow. Other orders been placed. So we're set for, excuse me, Thursday. So we're set for C S P. Again, the itinerary is on the sheet. Next. Tuesday would be conservation, sanitation, zoning and unified outdoors. Like we have in the past at that facility. On Wednesday, highway with extension at the Ethanate Building. Orchard Manor on the twenty fourth. And courthouse administration on the twenty ninth, weeks from today.
Would you like committees to, uh, serve or what do you got planned?
Joe asked the question. Tentatively upstairs unless the weather really turns out perfect. It's just easier to plan for upstairs.
At what time are these events? Are they all?
So that's the next discussion, sorry. We've pretty much decided, we talked about it a little bit yesterday after law enforcement. We're gonna be prepared to serve at eleven thirty on Thursday. The food is gonna be ready by ten thirty. We need to pick that up in Wilmington and then get ready. So hopefully by eleven and yes, Pat, I would hope that. Committees would volunteer to help with their locations. If there's any challenges, let us know. So next week will be a busy week. Three days in a row, but it's part of the reason why. Most of them, Alicia's not here, but we did start earlier at Orchard Manor.
Catch of the crew. Cause of the two shift change.
So we may change that to ten thirty. Is that when we started last? Alicia, can you answer the question if you're available? Here, I'll take your question.
So what time do we want the committee members there? Ten thirty or eleven?
I think eleven. The food's all prepared and every, all the supplies should be there. If there's any volunteers that, that wanna make the trip to Wilmington or pick up curds along the way, everything else is local.
Oh, no courage tomorrow.
No courage, so Thursday. Miles is already making them with the first. Just because of the timing. If you could coordinate with me. Or do you want to contact you? Either one of us coordinate help so we make sure if we see a shortage, we'll reach out and I think it's always been a good group. The other concern and question that I have is considering store prizes or other. Drink it. We've had some challenges in the past and so I'm gonna open it up to comments. We haven't done anything yet for Thursday. Not that we can't, it's only a couple of days, but we can. Come up with something. One of the ideas that's been shared and it's my idea, but do we just go with gift cards? Everything's consistent. And then do we give them store prizes or do we give them to those that are not attendance?
That are what?
That are not in attendance. Because there are some departments that their staff can't be there at for a meal. And if we're rewarding staff with a meal, should we give gift cards to those that are not?
But I didn't like turkey and dress and I wouldn't come to the meal and get a gift card so I can get a donut.
Wow.
Her Catholic's big good.
Like the health department, the nurses could be anywhere in the county. They're not necessarily gonna be standing here waiting for lunch.
No.
Which begs the question, how are you gonna split H H S up? Or which one of these is for H H S?
It's kind of by the building.
They have two.
Right.
The health people are in the administration and.
And unified, or I mean, social services at C S P. That is the way we calculated the manpower, the number.
So what are you thinking about giving them for a card?
I don't know.
Less than twenty five dollars is a slap in the face.
Do we have a line item for this? Do we have a budget that?
We have a five thousand dollar budget for this.
And the food will cost approximately. Approximately.
Probably looking at. Probably looking at just over two hundred dollars per day from Ma's Bakery. So there was a thousand to twelve hundred.
Quick trip, they donate the milk or they?
No, no. Well, we, you and I are still in discussion. How far we're going.
Even if it's two thousand, you got three thousand.
Yeah.
Kathy.
Probably half, less than half of that will be spent. Uh, the other discussion that I've had with a department or two is. And I understand Pat's comment, but how much can we give away and not make it taxable? So that may be a question for Operation Council.
Thanks for paying attention. Uh, so if we, by all the food.
If we give, if we give away gift cards. One department head is concerned that if we give away. Fifteen dollar gift card, it's taxable and needs to be added to.
Probably technically speaking.
Patrick.
Well, my experience is it's actual income. Number one, number two, I don't know what department these costs are gonna flow through, but if they somehow get filtered down to the departments. It's an excludable cost when it comes for grant reimbursements. Or at least for most federal and state uh contracts that I have been involved with.
But if it's a door price, it's not.
So if it's a ten dollar gift card. Because the meal is eight to ten bucks maybe.
In Iowa, as far as what we found, the laws of it was ten dollars or below, it's not taxable, but it had to be specific. So. We're giving everybody a movie ticket to be used in Lancaster or we're giving everybody a ten dollar gift card for X. We did use chamber dollars for a long time. That was a huge, ended up being a. Kind of a slap on the hand because you could go in town anywhere and use it for alcohol, gas. You know, you could use it for anything. So it had to be very specific, but when we did items that were over ten dollars, we did have to run that through payroll. As a taxable to the employee. So. That's just my experiences. I don't know if there's some difference in Wisconsin.
So ten under.
I was thinking, keep it simple. So I was just thinking ten dollar quick trip, but that was simple. So that's why there's, that's a discussion. It's not my.
So if you have to keep it even, that means everybody gets one whether they come to the luncheon or not, I'm assuming. So how many employees do we have? Total.
Five hundred total, but that's part timers and everything.
Yeah. There'd be your five thousand.
So if we got two hundred gift cards. It's a couple thousand bucks. Joe.
Probably shouldn't say this out loud, but uh.
Cash, it's not traceable.
I can't really speak for everyone, but I speak for myself, for a few, probably a few people that I work with. The meal itself, I feel is a, is a, is a good appreciation and a gift card isn't necessary in my opinion. I mean, we appreciate the meal and the effort. I don't really feel like gift cards. I appreciate, you know, thinking about it and. But in all reality, it's, I don't feel it's actually a big deal.
Well, I know that we've had some challenges with the door prizes before and that's why I was just trying to standardize it. Uh, again, after kind of recacing games and others, so.
We have in the past, if you came to the meal, you got your meal, but if it was something like was mentioned. We had nurses on the floor, whatever. They couldn't come to the meal, so they did get that gift or their gift card or whatever, whatever we were doing. So. But that was. An email from the department saying these people, now if you just decide you don't wanna come in and go to the meal, then you don't get anything. But if you're working. Your department manager, manager verifies that, then you get the card if you couldn't make it to the meal. That's how we.
Again, I wanna keep it simple, so I don't want a whole lot of verification and tracking.
I do know when we did Orchard Manor last year that we did make a meal for all the ladies at night. For the staff that night, we put it in the refrigerator. So when they took their break that night, Alicia was very good about. Telling us how many staff was coming on and we did take care of them. So I mean, you gotta be careful. We're gonna leave the leftover food. You can understand, somebody's not there. You got leftover food. You give that away, do you?
And that's been the discussion that Tanya and I've had. Uh, she made sure we ordered enough for Thursday. And there will be leftover, but again, that's a twenty four hour facility. So they've got other staff that use it.
Absolutely.
And then it gets to be a track issue.
I get it. I'm just, I kinda agree with Greg that if, if uh. We're at least are doing it. What did we do before? You know, we just sent them an email out and you said, thanks for all your help. I mean, we went above and beyond and, but uh. We shouldn't have to, you know, we shouldn't have to give them something that I would hope they know that we appreciate. And I get it, it's not fair. It was my day off and I was a sheriff deputy. Am I gonna come all the way into Lancaster from Baskerville to get a free lunch? You know, to see me, they probably will, but you know, but uh, you know, it, it is what it is, but you know what I'm saying?
So it's the county board, we've allocated five thousand dollars. In the past, we have not spent that much. Again, I'm, I'm opening it up for discussion and. We don't have any action on here, but consensus.
If you got whatever it is you decide to give. You, I lost my train of thought. That you just include all the employees in the drawing for whatever the item is. And then maybe that's enough. To at least show that they have an opportunity to win a door prize, even if they can't be at the launch.
We took, yeah, out at Orchard Manor, they wrote everybody's name that was every employee.
It was a good idea and.
No, a new idea.
It's not notable that we're turning and did win a door prize.
Yeah.
But. Well, we'll see. You can't make it perfect, I guess, is what I'm seeing here. You got all these different departments with different employees, different hours. Lori, make it simple.
And if I was an employee. I have employees and if I gave somebody a ten dollar gift card. Um, I would say whoopee, big deal, you know? I mean, I'm not being disrespectful, but what I'm saying is. If I went and gave my employees a ten dollar gift card, they'd tell me thanks and when they turn their back, they'd say, well, you cheap ass, you know?
That's because they know you.
Yeah, exactly. But you know what I'm saying?
Take Lori first.
First of all, Patrick, I don't think they would think that at all. I think most of them would be like, wow, that was pretty nice. We, I, my thought was we, we do a lot of sway guidance, you know, because they see it's having on our logo. Um, and so we have this discussion literally every year. What do we give volunteers? And we have no budget, we have no money. And, and I always say people aren't, you know, they don't, are not here to get it, you know, once a year to get this thing. But maybe when we get the new logo, if we can settle on a logo. We go through foreign print, maybe we can give them a little something with the new county logo on, on it to those that aren't able. I mean, I have meal site managers that obviously their whole job is centered around providing lunch to people, so they can't come for lunch. Because it, it doesn't make sense, but I don't know if we could do something like that or just put together a little. Even, even just a little something with, you know. You're a great employee with just a little something in it. It doesn't have to be a lot. It's really more of a thought, I think. Of just, we didn't forget you over the years.
Kathy.
I agree. A lot of good ideas, but some of it's really complicated. But. My personal opinion is that this is fairly new within the last couple of years that we've done. We've had very positive feedback by offering this appreciation luncheon. And, and my experience is very similar to what Frank was saying. It's, it's like, we're thinking. I mean, so part of it. We, our mission as board members, because we all are responsible with these committees. Take those committee people. Committee members reinforce the appreciation. I mean, a, a face to face thank you whenever possible. To me, it would mean more than a gift card. So.
And kinda on that note, from the feedback I've gotten as well as making sure that you as committee members, board members that you're introducing yourself to employees. I heard some comments, well, they didn't even come over and talk to me, you know, so I know you probably can't get to everybody, but. I'm seeing you talking to people, employees there. Always just listening to that.
With the, the logo work that you're doing, then something we can look forward to in the future. In addition to, you know, patches on people's shirts and things like that. Is maybe we could contract out for some county coffee cups with a logo on them. In the departments and whatever. And if we did have county coffee cups, those would be good gifts to give away.
Did you get me? When I like a yede?
Okay, so I think we're pretty much set. We're just kinda, kinda dropped the idea. Of uh, anything extra. At this point. And with the appreciation.
On that note, can I, can we make an, an offer or suggestion that we take that twenty five hundred dollars? Or two thousand dollars, whatever left in for Christmas? That's an awesome idea that we get everybody a coffee cup or.
Why we couldn't.
A thermos. I, I, that's an awesome idea. Um, everybody that uh, if maybe by then you have your logo, if we don't have our logo, we save that money in for Christmas. Um, like you said, the people just like you to say, thank you. You know?
That's true.
And we know we got good employees, you know?
We'll take that into consideration.
Thank you. Executive committee, hope you're listening.
So we will. Move on to item fifteen, resolution. Twenty twenty five, you show for authorized participation in the public funding for snowmobile trails. Uh, this action will be contingent on action taken next week by the egg extension fair compete. Uh, it's been an annual event that we participate in the DNR's snowmobile trails project. Our community development. It's here has normally taken the lead with a lot of assistance from our administrative staff. Lori James have continued that, taken in all the requests from snowmobile clubs. To uh. For reimbursement on the trail system for science, grooming, et cetera. So action taken on this item will be contingent on next week's.
I would like to make a motion to approve this.
Motion by Josh, I can write Mark Bosker. To approve the resolution twenty twenty five for authorizing participation in public funding for snowmobile trails. Any further questions, comments? On favorite motion, please say aye. You wanna post him? Motion, curious. Item sixteen, it is discussion and possible action on out of budget spending for thirty thousand dollars to continue assistance. For the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four audit.
Before we get to the agenda, I have a quick update on the twenty twenty three audit. I think it's appropriate. As of yesterday afternoon, finance department was able to deliver our work product as requested by our audit firm, Baker Tilling. As such, Baker Tilling is scheduling their team to reengage in a twenty twenty financial audit. Uh, they have penciled in tentatively made, we can make it as the commencement date for their work. Attached to this, uh, this Friday is the last day. Of the contract period for our contract worker that was previously approved. For a thirty thousand dollar out of budget spending. We are placing on, placing up for your consideration today. An additional eight weeks or an additional thirty thousand dollars out of budget spending to extend the work of this contract worker. While most of the twenty twenty three audit work is complete, there is some cleanup work that still needs to be done. Uh, in my opinion, I think it's vital that this contract worker be present while Baker Tilly conducts its testing. Or transactional history. Additionally, uh, beyond twenty twenty three, we are now looking at another monument, monumental task and that is the twenty twenty four audit. Just to give you some perspective. Most of the work that we had associated with the twenty twenty three audit was the final six months of the twenty twenty three fiscal year. Being the post migration to Tyra Munis. Well, we do know of most of the anticipated problems that we will be encountering for twenty twenty four. There are still some unknowns, but the other factor to consider is we will now be combing over or reviewing. And or revising twelve months worth of transactional history as compared to the six months that we worked on for twenty twenty three. If there's anything else I need to. Bring up. I think that pretty much covers. So the request is out there. I will address any questions in this board and service.
Yes.
Going back, if we don't meet the deadlines in twenty twenty four.
Let me try to address it this way. So part of my job is to. Reduce or eliminate certain costs. Another part of that job is to seek out additional revenue sources. Attached to the work we've done for twenty twenty three. And possibly for twenty twenty four is the loss of revenue. And what we encountered in twenty twenty three, I'm gonna let Bob address that. And the dollar significance that we need to factor into a decision like this.
Well, about a year ago, we had a contract with Service. That was, it was made to create what in short terms is for me. It's sort of formally submitted to the state. Rates and expenses over the past year that they monitor uh for. Funding in the future. Uh, that form was completed before the deadline. Part of the challenge was that. For twenty three audit was not familiar with that. I think it's a test table sixteen layer of concurrents. And that started the whole diamond effect on moving to Baker Tilly and some of the other issues, but. The penalty for that was ten percent decrease in transportation. So my cost is two hundred and twenty five thousand because that form is not complete. And then there's other things that I know that. Nate, Patrick, and other department heads negotiating with HS, TCF, others. Because of the way they've verified the numbers. As Patrick said before, those numbers we think are sanitary can be forwarded on. But could be quarter million dollars. In twenty five because of the lack of twenty four. So. The real numbers, twenty three were twenty five plus. That's what the future impact could be.
And to translate the bottom line on this, spending this thirty thousand dollars is making it much more likely. That we won't endure that problem that we had for twenty twenty three. So we're basically spending thirty thousand dollars to make sure that we save two hundred. So we're basically spending thirty thousand dollars to make sure that we save two hundred fifty.
Very safe assumption. Additionally, if I could throw in, you know, at least it's not here. Another significant dollar amount that we could lose out on is. Approximately four hundred thousand dollars in. Non-reversible cost at Orchard Banner. As a result of not having accurate numbers. So yeah, the loss of revenue or non-reversible expenses is significant. Yes.
Thank you. Given what we know. About twenty twenty three now. For six months of time. This is twelve months. Shouldn't that knowledge reduce the total amount of time needed to work on the twenty twenty four reconciliation? And what would that be?
For like work?
Yes.
My response would be yes.
It would be reduced significantly.
I would assume it would be reduced.
But what you don't know.
We don't know, we don't know that about twenty twenty four that, you know, we experienced that in our twenty twenty three work. You know, we took two steps forward and then boom, we hit. A hill and took a step back, right? So it could happen, but we do know, we do know. Pattern of transactions will apply in twenty twenty four that we reviewed and revised in twenty twenty three. So yes, there should be a contraction of time, that type of, yes.
So the twenty twenty three envision that the final coming back timeframe. I realize.
Yeah, I really don't have a firm grip on the time element that Baker Tilly would take. Once they complete their, what we call their field work. So once that's done, it goes into their management structure. I really don't know what that timeframe is.
So in the meantime, you're working on twenty twenty four trying to finalize that, correct?
Yes.
And what would be a timeframe on that?
You know, we are. Three and a half, four months into the twenty twenty three. I would hope it wouldn't take that long. But again, I think as I told the executive meeting this morning. I want to eliminate this possibility as taking that much time.
So do you eliminate or the chance then of twenty twenty five even started?
Well, with the, you know, the work that we have uncovered, the issues that we have uncovered in twenty twenty three. We will now be able to go in and correct a lot of those on the front end so that we won't have to be going in and revising.
Hopefully it catches up. Understand. Good luck.
Mark, did you have something?
It was very similar to what John asked. I guess one thing I was thinking was, I mean. What would be the deadlines to not miss out on this dollar amounts that we had previously talked about, forget the twenty twenty four time? That's gotta be a consideration, right?
The form A initial deadline is May fifteenth, but you can get extensions.
That's, that's for twenty twenty four.
That's for the twenty four. Reimbursement. Form A, which is the initial form that needs to go into the state on reimburse.
If I'm hearing this right, this thirty thousand dollars isn't the end of it. So I mean, how much of an open checkbook are we gonna give them? I mean, they got us over a barrel. We have to have the twenty three out and done. We need the twenty twenty three out and done, should have been done. Twenty four should have at least been in progress and twenty five, we're still guessing. And none of our departments know where they're at. So we're throwing thirty thousand dollars at thirty thousand dollars. How many more thirty thousand dollars do we need to throw at this game to get it done?
We, that's, that's an unknown, but twenty five has been. Turned over in Tyler Munis. It's not complete. But as Patrick just stated, the issues that we found or that his team has found. Have been corrected going forward in twenty five, so we won't need to backtrack other than. Because of the due diligence and time he has spent, some of the other adjustments are not being made on. Let the amounts of revenue in twenty five at this point.
And just out of curiosity, do we have any idea how many federal dollars are on hold because of this fiasco? How many of our departments are being affected? All of them are just ninety percent of them.
I really don't have a handle on that. We have to take that question down to the department heads. At this point in time. Yeah, I'm what, six months into the job? I just have not been able to devote the time that this position deserves to look at situations like that. So I'm sorry, I just cannot answer that question right now. I do know that some departments are looking at pauses. On the reimbursements on their grants. I just don't have a dollar.
And just somewhat for clarification, Carol, to your comment on federal dollars. Those federal dollars come through the state and the delay is because the state needs to approve. So there may be some federal dollars, but it's mostly state funding.
But, but the state just told it, I mean, we lost our, we lost our rating. And that's all paused, which is another component of this that we won't get back for years.
Our credit rating, so will we.
And.
Low money or higher.
I mean, this is just. We're, we're rolling down a hill and we're picking up speed, but I'm just not sure we're picking it up in a way that's gonna save us at the end of the day from. Catastrophe, because I, I just, this is to me as a county board, as a steward of the citizens of the county, I find this unacceptable. And I just can't believe that there aren't other people in this room that are finding this unacceptable.
Can I, let me address the credit rating issue I made.
Sure.
To be accurate, it has not been a downgrade. It has been a suspension. Okay, and what that means is when we deliver financial numbers for twenty twenty three to S and P, they will pick those numbers up. And assign a credit rating based on that set of numbers. So there is a, I just want to make sure the people in this room, those that are listening out there in the ether. There is a major difference between a suspension and a downgrade. We have not been downgraded.
So my question to that would be then, if we've been paused or suspended. And we took years to get to an A plus rating, years. It was under Nancy Scott. For those of you that have been around for a while and then kept it all this time. I, I personally do not believe that they're just gonna reinstate you at the same rate after we've had all this happen. That's my personal opinion. You have your personal opinion and we can agree to disagree and I understand that. But that is a very big deal as I already reiterated to Mr. Druckin. That I think this is a very huge issue. I'm tired of coming to meetings and we were, we gave you thirty thousand dollars, we were all fun later, nothing had happened, no report. The next day, S and P rating out in the newspaper in Platteville. We didn't hear about it here. I heard about it in Platteville. Two months later, we're out of money. We need more money. Next month will come, well, we're halfway through it. We need more money. We're gonna be six months into twenty twenty five, spent sixty thousand dollars. He asking for another thirty thousand at least. And ninety thousand dollars doesn't even, we don't even know if that's gonna fix it. Are you guys not concerned? I'm just curious.
Joe.
How would you propose that we fix this deferment? Because it is a problem that we can't just go in and flip a switch and fix. That's the part that has to get fixed. If we don't fix it, then we're gonna be.
But they have us over the barrel and it didn't need to get to this, this point.
But it is here, so you can't dwell on what happened to get here. We have to look at, we are here today and we need to get to here. How do we?
But there's no timeframe, Joe. There's no end date to this. It's just an open check to continue. Spinning our wheels and moving. Attempting to get it done, but it's an open checkbook. And I don't particularly like that.
It's an unfortunate situation. I agree, but I will remind you that my position sat vacant, let not fall months. That's a lot of work that went unfinished, right? So we are playing catch up, no doubt about it.
Well, then if we sat eleven or twelve months, we should have had that a whole year salary to throw at this, correct? If that sat vacant, I don't know what they get paid. I can look it up. But if it sat vacant for eleven months, we saved a couple hundred thousand dollars. I agree with Carol. I thought when we did this thirty thousand last month, that we were done. You sit out the highway department and we go look at funding. They say, well, we can't put anything in the computer because we don't have twenty three. We can only have two things in there. Well, I guess I was gonna lose two hundred and fifty thousand dollars maybe next year. We already got screwed on the twenty three. We've been getting screwed hard. We sure as hell better make sure on May fifteenth that that report is in there. Because that's for a next one. We're gonna get an extension. We've given six extensions here. We just keep going on. If we went eleven months, why were we the board? Where were we at? We were in the dark. Did anybody tell us that, that where we're at? We should have cut subcontracted. We should have done something for Christ's sake. You know, we can't get funding for twenty five because we can't put Tyler Munis in the computer. Here's thirty thousand dollars and if I paid somebody thirty thousand dollars, I agree with Carol. There needs to be an end date. And if the end date is May first, we're sure as hell gonna bust our butt to get it done by May first. It sounds easy. But what else do you want? You know, are we gonna be in twenty twenty six? And they're gonna tell us that, well, we did good new twenty twenty five because we didn't have twenty three done? This is bullshit. I mean, we look at it from, you know, last month when we sent the thirty thousand dollars, I personally thought that was it. That was gonna get us there. Maybe nobody else seen it, but that's what I thought. When I seen this on the agenda, I thought, oh my God, this is an every month occurrence. You know, and I get it, it's a mess, but wow. And to sit here on the board saying that the payment is due or a summary is due on May fifteenth. And we're gonna ask for an extension, we as a county board should be embarrassed as hell. Thank you.
Kathy.
I just want to address a couple of things. This is overall a very, very unfortunate thing that has happened. And, and. A large portion of it comes from not having a Patrick for a year. And when I've heard at different meetings, how complicated it is. To do this catch up for twenty three, prepping for twenty four, trying to look down the road. I'm, I'm not computer savvy, so when I hear we gotta enter, what, how many? Tens of thousands or millions of entries into a computer, that, that kind of just gives me the shivers to do that. But as, yes, I'm concerned about. The, the fact that these reports are late. I'm concerned that this is costing the county additional money. But I also feel very strongly that we have the staff in place that's trying to get us out of this. And, and when I hear Patrick going through some of the details as far as. The roadblocks, the toggles, the, that type of thing, it's, for me, I don't understand it. It's, it's, I don't have that little computer chip in my head, but. I, while it's unfortunate, we have found ourselves in this situation. I feel that we're on the right track and we're, it's, it's, we just need to keep moving. I think that. Between Patrick and Nate and Rob, the, the presentations that we've had and I know that they're working with department heads. Everybody is pulling together. We all realize that this is a major issue. And it's not like we have this group fighting this group or this fighting this group. I have, I think we all need to be. Uh, focused on, okay, we've got a really icky situation here. How do we get to, how, how do we get to the end of it? And I frankly am looking to our leaders to. To get it done.
I think you had your hand up. Okay. I know we're all blowing off some steam here. Yes, I've had feelings of embarrassment. Some people express it outwardly, some people don't. I don't happen to express it outwardly, but what I wanna make sure that is said here is that. These guys are trying to fix a problem. It sounds to me like we're ripping on them. And I don't think that's what we mean. Hopefully, I don't think that's what we mean. We have a qualified person working on this. And he said something before that I had learned earlier in my career, sometimes you don't know what you don't know. And there isn't anything you can do about that. It just is. Yes, frustration, yes, embarrassment. We got people working on it. That's, that's how you gotta look at it, look forward. Yes, we do answer to our constituents. Carol's right too. Uh, but we still gotta remember, people are working on it and. The extra thirty thousand, when it already cost two hundred and twenty thousand or whatever that number was, plus. Plus another thirty thousand, I think the faster, quicker we get it done, the better. And I. I don't know what your work schedule is, but I bet you it's a lot more than eight hours a day. That comes to trying to fix this.
Can I just expand on something, Rick said, you mentioned. The efforts that we're putting into this and maybe this can provide some level of comfort. The individual that we hired, the contract organ that we hired. The expertise that she had, she has been, in my position as finance director for a couple municipalities. Here in Wisconsin. She has dealt with Tyler Munis significantly, and those instances have been inside and out. And this individual has been working full time now for eight weeks. And we're just now getting the work product delivered. That hopefully will give you some type of understanding as to the depth and the complexity. That this project is kind of more, and I shouldn't say warped into, it's what existed when I walked in the door at Grant County. So, and, and that's not placing blame on anybody, right? No blame on anybody. It just is what it is. And that's, that's what we've been working. And I hope you can understand.
Roger.
Maybe three years ago, we lost our finance team. Two of them left, one, all three of them left. And one of them said we were toxic. I don't know what they mean by that. I don't really care. The thing is, we went without a team working on this and now we gotta play catch up. Yeah, Pat, right, maybe we should have money saved up for this. But I don't recall Patrick telling us eight weeks ago that this thirty thousand dollars the end of it. And this next thirty thousand dollars may not be the end of it yet. I think we have to do it, get this job done and next year, come budget time, look at putting another person in there. That finance department has, I do not understand government finance. I do not understand at all what it takes to do it. I, it's way beyond me. I think we got a problem down there with understaffed, trying to make them do something they can't do. And we gotta look at it in the future and get this job done.
Roger, that's why we were convinced as a board. Roger, that's why we were convinced as a board midstream halfway in the middle of a year to go to Tyler Muniz because we were going to fix all this problem.
I'm guilty of that.
We're all guilty of that, but we all were sold the bill of sales, each and every one of us. In the middle of a year, we switched.
You never switch horses in the middle.
We meant, we switched in the middle of the year and we were convinced and we were convinced as a board. We only know what, that we didn't know, we'll use his line. All we, all we acted on is what we were told.
Yep. Well, we got to go ahead and fix it. Sitting here blaming somebody.
Yeah, and now you're saying that, that we got to hire somebody else. I, I get it. I'm not blaming him. I'm just saying that the urgency is, is phenomenal. It wanted enough that I guess we got to hire three to get it done, you know?
That was the discussion had at the executive committee, the executive committee for just the whole county board for action. That over the next three months, Patrick and Nate will consider what other options there are going forward. If there are other options needed, but I think the key thing is we need to move forward. We, we need to, as many people have said, we fell into a bad situation, but we're trying to make the best of it. We need to move forward. We need to do what we can. And we have an individual now that's been with us for three months. And Patrick is comfortable working with her, so. The item on the agenda is to continue that reach.
I'll make a motion read for the $30,000 out of, uh, additional spending.
Motion by Roger, Mark.
Second to that.
Again, by Mark, any further comments?
Will be a roll call vote.
Will be a roll call vote.
The motion before us is to use out of budget spending similarly from the general fund of $30,000 for the continued assistance to work on the 23, 2024 audit in finances.
Like you have one thing to that, but if we could somehow, that that may not be the end of the spending on it either. So everybody knows that.
I'd like another addition to that. I would like to know from the previous budget that we didn't have a director for 11 months, what we saved as a county. I want to see, if you're telling me we didn't have one for 11 months.
You can, and Patrick.
I have a concern, Pat. I agree.
So the dollar amount that we're talking about, okay, had basically been reallocated to different resources. Those resources being we contracted out one individual to assist us with the 2023 audit, okay? And that contract pretty much consumed, I guess, would be close to the equivalent of a year's total cost for the position that what that it's set vacant. So, yeah, unfortunately there still isn't that pool of dollars available in the budget.
All right, I get that, but then I do not want to sit in this meeting and hear that a vacant spot for 11 months. Cause you just got done telling me that we hired people, so we didn't have a spot vacant for 11 months. Is that not the way you'd assume it?
We actually had two contracted services.
Okay.
To help us.
So then we, we were not without a finance director for two months, correct?
We were without a finance director, but we had people doing that work.
Okay, so we cannot go out in public and tell everybody that we sat vacant for 11 months. And that's why we're in this trouble. That's the way I interpret it.
We're going to move forward.
Amen.
To be transparent and a little bit more clarifying, the dollars that were spent on that contract didn't cover an 11 month period of time. It covered the equivalent of five and a half weeks.
Must have paid him pretty good.
Okay, the motion before us is.
Question, how much is in the general fund right now? You seem to hit that baby pie off.
I couldn't even tell you what that number is right now.
When you're spending money, I like to know.
30 million.
That's less than that.
Well, I just looked up to what Kerry had and.
Well, yeah, those, that's, that's in all the funds that we have.
Oh, okay, okay. I was just looking at the end balance was 30 million.
And that's one of the numbers that Patrick was balancing.
Yep.
Anyway.
All right.
So the motion before us is to spend 30,000 out of budget spending from the general fund to continue the assistance for the 2023, 2024 audit. Roll call please.
You have three choices.
Adam still on?
No, Adam was not participating. 12 yes, 2 no, 1 abstained and 2 abs. The motion carries. Okay.
So the motion carries. AM 17, discussion on county board rules committees and compensation. Most of this is for information only. The clerk has printed the, one of the sheets that was in your packet for consideration of possibilities of compensation for county board chair, vice chair and for DMs into the future. A couple of months ago, you would have received a template that the WCA has created for board rules. The media assignments. Through that template last week, there's some information in there that we do address. There's some that we need to address. Part of the reason for using the template that WCA has advised is that we can codify the information and make it more readily available and ability to adjust. Discussion yesterday was that these board rules and compensation, committee assignments, et cetera, we would like to get action to our July. So the executive committee will continue to work and the rules will take effect April the 3rd, Tuesday in April of next year with the board. New board is established. We want to get this done in July for lots of purposes and definitely before papers are taken out in December, so everyone knows where we're at. So are there any questions on the information I was sharing? It'll probably remain on an executive and possibly county board until complete.
Carol.
Would it be hard to have a column that indicates which of these counties have an administrator? That, I mean, if it's a lot of work.
Probably be color coded because it is a spreadsheet. So it could be executive administrator, administrative coordinator.
I, to me, that would be real helpful. Also, I just talked to one of you. I forget which one of you wanted to know the number of committees that board that like, this might be harder to get, the number of committees that board members sit on.
From other counties?
Yeah, that hard, that's probably a hard one to pull.
It's probably not impossible, but it could be.
Time sensitive, okay. It might be, it might be labor intensive.
There are some counties that are down to five standing committees and a few subcommittees. I mean, that's probably the extreme all the way up as high as I think there's one county that's got 37 committees.
How many?
37.
Okay, never mind. I'll just, well, I'll compare similar counties to ourselves and I'll just, I can go to their website.
A lot of that is available if you go to WCA's website and take the comparative county and then go to that county's website.
I can get that information.
Little research, but I don't know that there's anything from WC or anybody that's compiled that. Any other discussion for today's purposes on this subject?
Rick. To maybe reiterate, is this just because we're making overall changes? Is there a necessity for a change from what we're doing right now? That anyone can.
Probably the biggest concern is compensation to the county board chair because in the past, the county board chair was administrative coordinator. We've gone to an administrator. That's the number one. Number two is, uh, Wisconsin Counties Association had two in the boardroom discussions earlier this year trying to create consistency across all counties in county board rules. And that's why they put out the template.
Your consistency is really all over the board, right?
Well, and it's like Carol just mentioned. It depends if you have an executive or administrator or if they're administrative coordinator style and who may be the administrative coordinator. Now, we've seen the presentation service here in January, you did a presentation, you know, there's all kinds of different opportunities, some elected officials and this and that.
WCA says that we have to do it.
It's just guidelines. There's 72 counties in the state of Wisconsin and we do business 72 different ways. And if nobody agrees with that, just start looking around.
I just thought it would be good to reiterate some of that.
So if you've got any ideas, share them with me or anybody else on executives or, uh, to the whole crew. It's going to take some work to get this done. With that said, uh, we'll move to committee reports.
I'm getting late unless some committee has some really important report and save it for goal.
Roger suggests for go committee reports seconded by John Bynum.
I wanted to just comment if I could. I'll second that for the sake of moving on.
I'll take that second then.
Okay.
Then we will, uh.
Take questions.
Okay.
Take questions.
The economic meeting will be the 23rd at Banfield, Cuban City, meeting at 6 o'clock and 5 o'clock. We're going to the AYS facility in Cuban City. Has interest that'll tie into their whole.
I tell them all that the highway that John is retiring November 1st, so everybody knows.
Anything else?
Probably a little younger.
Motion by Roger Guthrie to adjourn, seconded by Joe Mumm until May 20th, 2025 at 10 a.m. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, we stand at her and thank you all for your participation.